All right. The Situate School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. That will call the January 27, 2025, Situate School Committee meeting to order here at 6:01, and we will start with public comments. I don't see any names raised. All right. Let's move forward with our student report. Jane Ryan.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I wanted to begin with our winter sports update. Wrestling, boys' ice hockey, girls' ice hockey, voice moving and girls' swimming all have winning records thus far. And special congratulations to Mike Costa, Ben Roach, Grayson Foley, and Jack Delacorner for breaking the 50-meter shuttle relay for Situate High School last week. And for our DECA update, as I mentioned last week, the following students finished in first place or more in more than one category and will be moving on to states. Congratulations to Anna Ryan for apparel and community awareness project, Owen Morley for business solution, Jacoby Gilligan for business solution, Bailey Young and Savannah Garabedian for both financial literacy projects and financial team event, and Matt Belucci and Charlie Ward for their financial team event and startup business plan project. And this past week, Mr. Adams presented his MLK celebration at Situate High School on MLK Day. It was a great event, filled with music, dancing, and speeches. And a special congratulations to our librarian, Ms. Newman, for receiving the 2025 MSLA President's Award. This honor is well deserved. And another congratulations to the winners of the American Legion Speech Competition. In first place was Alexa Tracy, second was Mason Alvarez, and third was Summer Crowley. They won over $2,000 in scholarship money from the American Legion, and both Alexa and Mason moved on to regionals and placed first and second, and will compete in states in March. For guidance news, the School Counseling Department will offer the ASBAB Career Exploration Program on Wednesday, February 12, to any students in 10th through 12th grade. This enables students to explore careers in the context of their skills and interests, understand all of their options, and plan a path for their choice post-high school. Students who sign up for the example will also be invited for an interpretation session, where score results will be explained for them. And that's all I have for you. And we hope to have a survey about Whitlock in next session.
Awesome.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I'll turn it over to Dr. Rab for our leadership report.
Thank you. If you'd just give me one moment to share my screen. I'm giving Mr. Burke the microphone.
I'm sure.
He's going to start.
Superintendent Burke has to set us off.
Oh, I see. I was going to joke about confusing the committee by presenting two budgets at the same time, and I did the same thing. So we're starting with the 25 budget. To date, I haven't shown the committee anything for FY25 yet, so I thought, let's start with 25, get a sense of where we're at. And for ease of reference on this report, I did use line numbers, so if anybody wants to reference a particular line, we can do that. But in broad strokes for FY25, we're six months into the fiscal year. This is as of January 2nd, and we've spent 46% of our budget, which again is expected six months into the year. And there's certain targets that I look for when we're at this point. One is that on any non-union salary line, we spent about half of that because we start those salaries on July 1st. And then for any union salary line, we spent 35%, 37% because they're only four months into the year, and they have a lump sum payment in June. So when I see those targets, I see that a budget is trending in the right direction six months in, and I saw both of those in this budget as you look through the different lines. The one thing that I did notice on here is if you look at line 6, the teacher course reimbursement does remain among the school committee lines. It can be changed, but it's difficult to do that because then it makes it harder to compare from one year to the next. You're always kind of chasing that number. So I left it there with the understanding that that is money dedicated toward teacher course reimbursement, and that's always a year behind. So if you see the transfer, the $82,000 transfer, we're always paying that a year behind, and it seems to catch up every year, but we do pay out a good chunk of that. So far, to date, we've spent $53,000 of that reimbursement money, and there's more available. As I mentioned, the salary lines are appropriate. The other thing I like to look at is the expense lines for textbooks and supplies. Contrary to salaries, I want to see almost all the textbook money spent because at this point in the school year, I would expect that anybody who needed textbooks and needed supplies, they would have been bought. And so, in fact, 99% of our textbook money has been spent. And as mentioned at the previous meeting, the mathematics curriculum has been purchased, so we do have all of those materials. You may look online to 213, and I can jump ahead to it pretty quickly here. If you look at line 213 on the private school tuition, and you'll notice it's overspent by $705,000. And you may think, I've lost my mind. I haven't. What we do is we take tuition out of the 240 grant, which is an entitlement grant through the IDEA, and we also use circuit breaker funding for that as well. At this point in the year, some of those decisions are still being made. So the money was spent against the line due to ease, but we will correct that and have it down to what the actual number should be. And then the other thing I often get asked is, we do contribute toward the School Resource Office's salary, but we do that once in June. And so town hall just kind of does that as a correction in June, and they take the entirety of the salary that we budget. So unless there's any questions, as far as I'm concerned, FY 2025 is trending as appropriate, both with salaries and expenses at this point. And I will show, not at the next meeting because we're going to dedicate that to 26, but at a meeting coming up, will transfer to true up any of the areas that you do. A couple of the heating and generator lines are a little overspent. It's been cold. That's what we're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Rab. Questions from the committee?
No, this is great. Thank you.
I just have a question with the heating. So, I mean, tough to predict, obviously, but you feel like we're in a good place for what's been budgeted for the remainder of the year, and you've padded that in essentially.
Absolutely. Especially for gas.
Yeah.
We spent a little extra on the generators this year to make sure they were all properly serviced, amongst them all coming into this room.
Thank you.
I'll never use the word "paying" publicly.
I mean, you know.
There's money available. Absolutely.
I know.
Is it typical that the transportation services would be 80% spread at this point?
Because it's also encumbered.
Okay.
So we do both. We spend and encumber. So moving on to 26. Okay, sorry.
I was going to say something about special education, tuitions, and just that's a tough, it's a tough line item to budget, so I appreciate your work on that one because, you know, even today on one of the mask listserv emails, it was just a lot about how impactful as we've been, we've known for years and been planning well on. So I say thank you to Bill for just the hard work on that, being able to plan out and be prepared for those rising costs that are the unanticipated rising costs that you need to anticipate. So I appreciate that.
No, thank you. Y'all say more than 26.
Yeah, I think that's why I said, Anne, this is more of a 26 appropriate, but thanks. All right. I think that's it. No, we're just getting started.
One minute. I try not to present two different budgets in one night, but unfortunately, tonight with everything, we needed to do that. So I'm just trying to share my screen again to bring up the 26 PowerPoint. It is included in your folders as well, so don't feel like you have to squint on the screen. Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I want to thank the school committee for allowing us to present this evening a week earlier than we typically do. For those community members that are paying attention tonight, we want to share that we've moved the traditional Saturday hearing to next Monday. And by the committee's request, which was a good one, we decided to have a first run of our FY 26 budget now. So this evening is a great opportunity to share that budget with the community, with the school committee, get feedback, make any necessary adjustments, and then prepare to do a much deeper dive on February 3rd, in which it will be the only agenda item. So I just want to start out with a little statement that I think summarizes this year's budget, and then we can get into the details. Good evening, esteemed members of the school committee, school community, and fellow SPS educators. I stand before you to present the proposed FY 26 school budget for the upcoming academic year. Although this budget to date represents only a 2% increase, approximately $48,125,617 for an $896,598 dollar increase from the town, and a total of $53,364,466, which includes grants and revolving accounts, which also represents approximately half of the monies we received last year, to put things in context, which is a big hit for us. I am proud to report, however, that this budget does reflect the values of our strategic plan and our unwavering commitment to providing our students with exceptional education that empowers them to succeed in an ever-changing world. It also avoids teacher-staff layoffs and a potential override for our community. At the heart of this budget lies a profound appreciation for the dedication, tireless effort of our incredible educators and support staff. We also include administrators in that. So I just want to pause and just thank all of our educators. Our budget, as you'll see, is approximately 80% people. It's a people business. We have some of the best. We're very fortunate for that. We want to keep them. We want this to be the place to be. I feel that's happening. We are one of the few districts that hasn't had a shortage in teacher applications. We've had a strong reputation, and I think we do that through the reflection of tonight's budget, which also reflects the values of the district through our strategic plan. So these teachers, educators, paraprofessionals, and staff, support staff and administrators are the architects of learning, nurturing young minds, and inspiring a love of knowledge. This budget prioritizes competitive salaries and professional development opportunities to attract and retain the finest educators in our region, and will have to absorb six contract negotiations as well. Furthermore, this budget places a premium on academic excellence. We will continue to invest in a dynamic and rigorous curriculum that fosters critical thinking, creativity, and problem-solving skills. We will equip our classrooms with the latest instructional resources and technologies, ensuring that our students have access to the tools they need to thrive in the digital age. Finally, this budget recognizes the importance of a well-maintained and safe learning environment. We will allocate resources for essential facility upgrades, including upgrades to our technology infrastructure, ensuring that our classrooms are conducive to learning, innovative, and cyber-safe. I urge you to join us in supporting this budget as an investment in our children's future, an investment in the vitality of our community, and an investment in the continued success of our great schools. I believe we are in the position, despite of dire economic times, due to our collective commitment to our values through the strategic plan and our steadfast commitment to transparency to the Situate taxpayers and responsible stewardship of their hard-earned money. In conclusion, I would like to thank our central office team, our school committee subcommittee, our school committee, our financial forecast committee, principals, department chairs, members of the district leadership team, and our current staff, all of them, who are able to focus and maintain values reflected in our strategic plan, and were also able to sacrifice and tighten their belts as needed to make this year's tight budget one that we can be proud of. So that being said, I'd like to bring those words to life through our numbers and a narrative through our presentation. And it's broken down first here through our strategic plan. I mentioned how it's a direct connection to that. And for those folks that don't recall, this was a collaborative effort through the whole school community, involving community members, staff, students, and the entire school community over a year-long preparation period for a five-year strategic plan that we are in the middle of re-realizing. So that's our guiding light. So our budget reflects our priorities. These are three strategic objectives, and this can be found on our website if you want to look it up, sit.org, and just type in strategic plan. You'll find more details behind this, but I'm going to get into each one of these individually so we can slide on to the next. So just some highlights on, again, although a beer bones budget, I think we were able to highlight some things, the things we're proud of, that we committed to, as I mentioned in my narrative. So for example, the curriculum instruction and assessment is a key part of supporting our educators and our students to individualize student learning. We started this process only a few years ago, and we're one that do not exist, and to stop that prematurely would really put a, would be detrimental, I think, to student learning. So we've committed to this, which updates our standards and align resources for all instructions online and hard copy. And I'm going to have a special guest tonight that can bring this to life, a little surprise in our budget processes to light things up and to give us a celebrity guest, and calibrate curriculum vertically and horizontally. So before I get into anything else, when people see the curriculum cycle that we're on, and again, this is new, you know, we recall we had math last year, and humanities year before. This year, it's social studies. I thought it'd be important for the community to hear an expert on the ground in the field talking a little bit about what this purchase means and how it impacts students. So I'd like to ask Sam, the department chair for our social studies department, Sam Lesniak, to probably just say a few words.
Thanks, Mr. Burke. And you say special guest, I think people might think differently, but here I am. No, I just feel like it's such a big investment, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about how important it is. And I think first to just recognize that, you know, we are a district that I think prioritizes and are at the forefront of putting high-quality instructional materials in front of kids. And I think that doing that and the commitment to that and staying the course with that is so, so important. So I wanted to just sort of illustrate the value that we're getting from that because I think sometimes people think when we're saying a textbook purchase, we're just getting books. And it's not just books. It is books. Like, we're getting over 2,000 books with what's proposed, over 18 courses, grade 6 through 12. It's bringing us into alignment with our 2018 curriculum frameworks, which is essential. So all of that yes is important, but I think there's so much value beyond that. So the first thing I just wanted to bring up is just that we are really, in this purchase, allowing a personalization and a customization of student learning. So I think we, as adults, when we approach a hard task, we all have strategies for how we do it. We take notes this way. We know we read this way. We have strategies. Right now, kids just have a book, but having an online digital platform allows kids to really customize how they're going to engage with material. So do they like having it read aloud to them? They can do that. Do they like annotating? They can do that. Do they like highlighting certain portions? It can do that. Are they a non-native English speaker that needs it translated? They can do that. Some of the platforms, and again, they all differ with which ones do what, but some of them also have the ability to adjust LexAid level, where depending on your reading level, it's able to customize where you're still getting the essential content, but at a level that you can access. And then I think also for students who are especially engaged, it offers extension pieces. So let's say you read a section of the textbook, you're super interested, there's a map you can click on, maybe there's a little video you can watch. And so I feel like the ability of kids to customize and personalize the way that they're going to learn material is going to be important, and it's on us as educators to teach kids how to utilize those resources. The second thing I think that we're really getting, other than the personalization, is just the professional development that teachers really need to roll this out. So in the proposal, there's two different kinds of professional development. There's first sessions with the textbook company, which we hope to do at the end of this year, once we've selected a book, where teachers, there's so many resources, it can almost be overwhelming with what's available. And so we want to give teachers time with the experts from that publishing company, who can walk teachers through what each platform does, so that they can then have time over the summer, if they choose, to really tailor their materials. I think you guys have heard me talk a lot about informed and engaged local citizens, like that's what we want. So we want to figure out how to use these resources, how to use them in a way that tailors to that mission. And so teachers need time to do that. And so by giving them both the time with the companies and the time over the summer, I think we're ensuring a smooth rollout day one versus learning on the fly. And that's what we really want for day one for kids, so that they're sort of going through this process and having those resources brought to light right at the start. So I know it's a lot. I think it's a huge investment. I really appreciate, you know, that we're staying the course, but I just sort of wanted to talk a little bit. It's not just books, there's so much more to it that we're really getting. So, thank you.
So also here, you've heard of the next one, which is, I think that dovetails into the summer professional development, obviously, is continuing the math and also to the social studies. MTSS, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, integration throughout the district. Just to give a little history here, that we've been speaking out for several years now, we had a three-year agreement with S3 in 2023 and 24, Gates Pilot, one class, one grade. This year, Gates is successfully implementing the entire school. It's going well. And then Jenkins is piloting this now with our hopes of going all K to 8 next year. The three years runs out, so we have to pick up some of that cost, so that's what you'll see in your budget this year. And I think the cool thing out of that is the MTSS Data Dashboard, which is kind of a one-stop shop for all of our data that the staff can look at, group meetings, individual meetings, meeting with parents, just got some of the things, MCAS, benchmark, grades, attendance, behavior, all in one place, where now we've kind of had to go to multiply different places. It's very taxing at the time. And so now, that dashboard has been developed after training and how to use all of those things. So that's exciting that we look forward to next year and expanding to the rest of the grade. So that's something we're investing in and will continue to invest in, because we feel successful with that. Next, so communication and community partnerships is the next objective, strategic objective. And so this is something we've continuously worked on and, you know, continued best practice to ensure accurate and succinct communications. So, you know, we realized at this point, now that we've got a new technology team online, and they're doing great work, I'll mention some of that later in the budget, are some really great things that we're doing in technology with our new team, is that we realized that we had a technology team handling a lot of the communications, and it was just too much, and it needed to be separated. So we're doing that now. We're looking to get some support, whether it's through an outside vendor, come in and help us do that. We've already worked with Chris Rann for a while to get some low-hanging fruit down this year, so we can do some things very well, but we need to come up with a communications plan, and that's part of our strategic goal, is to do that. So that's something we'll be working on as well. So we've got work to do there, but we've got an initial plan in place that we'll have to separate those two and get some outside help for that as well, and try to define roles, do a needs assessment. We sent out this week in the Thursday Thoughts, and we also sent it separately for the first time, a survey on just where people are at. We started to start simple, is, okay, where's our audience? What social media platforms are they listening to? Are they reading what we are sending out? And so we'll start with that, start digesting what the community thinks, what's going well, what we need improvement on. And once you get that information back, we can better target our communication, make it more consistent, make it more valuable, if you will. So again, work to do there, but an investment that we can continue to make there. Sustained partnerships, and we're very proud of the, you know, high school work and project Lead the Way with the career pathways. Here's just a few that you'll see in the, that are relatively new in your packet. I think these are things that, as we saw the vote for a new vocational school, I think this will be good for us to have these pathways there to, you know, not only to keep our students here, but to compete with other options that other districts may have. So I think that's going in a good direction and a good investment under tight constraints of our budget. Next slide. And then the finance facilities, personnel, and technology, you know, facilities. We've been miraculously being able to save something, again, not a lot of districts have, is that $250,000, which goes to extraordinary maintenance, which I think the town really appreciates, that community members really appreciate, something we shared a lot when we were promoting the new school, that we have built the trust in our community, that we're taking care of our current schools. That list has gone up through Thursday Thoughts and other venues, and we'll continue to do so. We'll continue to share, update people what we do with that money and how we don't wait till something breaks necessarily. We're proactive in making our schools not only good, but great for our kids to live and learn. We've got many examples of that, which, you know, we can eventually get into. Next one is staff, which we talked about, maintain current staffing levels. I think they're, you know, they're very strong where they are. And again, commitment right off the bat, which I mentioned earlier in my opening statement, that staff is something that we want to value, we value highly, and it has the most impact on student learning. So we want to put our money behind that, support that search. Technology, you know, something new that we're extremely proud of, and through grants and through the hard work of our new tech team, and Jackie Frangello and her team with the new tech director. Cybersecurity, you're going to see on there a lot. We found through their team's assessment and audit, we had some who were susceptible to potential breaches. As you probably read in other towns, those could be really catastrophic financially, and also breaching trust and access to people's private things. So that's laid out in some more detail in here, but overall, cybersecurity has been a huge investment for us this year. And Chromebook refresh, something we committed to several years ago. In grade 5, the students get their new Chromebooks, and in four years, they get, they run their course pretty much, and they're due for new ones. So that cost is baked into here. Tom will explain some of that, where I think we've got money left over from some of the grants we have to help pay for that, but that'll become a normal operating budget, so families do not have to purchase those. We'll also build in some extras to have if things break or kids need loaners, because we know that kids not having them is learning, so we figured that out. So that's built in there too, and that's a trend we made when we went to the one-to-one program. So that's been protected. Interactive panels. Now, Jackie could probably do a better job as a classroom teacher, but these are the new wave of interactive learning, similar to what we're seeing up here with for teachers to use as opposed to the old overheads, which are a little bit more funky, harder to use, unpredictable, breaking more, the light bulb goes out, you don't have it for a week. These are much better used, and we've been backfilling these periodically for a while now. So that's just something that will become part of our five, 10-year plan. And I think when you see more of all the technology budget, we're working on that five-year plan, little by little, but proactively on some of these safety things and must-asks for us throughout our district, not only safely, but also provide our students and staff with their Chromebooks as well and laptops. And so that's an upgrade. It's newer technology, proven technology, and something that we're doing in intervals so that our teachers have the best technology to teach their students. And the updated firewall is again, we're into the cyber security. It's just protecting anything from our Wi-Fi, from people hacking in, from safety, the use of our emails, so that people can't get into that. So we've invested a lot of that, that we've been able to follow along. So I think that's a really good place to be in that budget. All right. I'll pause there. Any questions on that before we get into the numbers that kind of... Any questions on that before we get into the numbers that kind of support some of these general concepts?
I was curious, I was sure that I asked you and Ryan on this, Sam, I appreciated your explanation. How much of that plan was informed by previous rollouts? Like are we learning from every time we do a rollout?
Yeah, I'll try that too. Yes, 100%, because we just started doing that. School committee's feedback, our experience, that's kind of what I talked to Sam was like, you know, I want you to be able to do it, because before we did it, we may not articulate it really what it's about, and people misunderstood. But I know that, you know, we talked about having a plan for the rollout of each of these, we didn't have that before. Now, the next thing we'd like to work on is the curriculum review process. So the training that goes with that specifically, professional development, the evaluation process that we do on our end, that we're trained and calibrated. So we're coming up with a whole list of things that we can be better at, so that rollout is just one big package. And each time it gets, it gets better, so this one's a little better than last year's rollout, just because we learned more, we added more, that's why we're doing more. So I anticipate even next year, so I think by next year, we'll do a couple of retrospects, some things that we're doing with social studies that we didn't do with math necessarily, we'll catch up a few of those things. And then moving in the future, we'll actually have a document, we'll be able to share with the committee, and our department chairs and teachers and principals, that this is how we roll out, you know, a new content area. So it's, so then we'll be able to tell people quite clearly, no, it's not just books, it's X, Y, Z, we have a very specific plan. So, good question, we're probably halfway there, but we have, I think, the resources and the plan to have this ready for you by the end of the year for the next rollout, including summer PE and all that kind of stuff. Very organized, tied to the budget, so that we can afford it, we can do it, it's done with fidelity.
It would be great whether it's, I don't want to take more work for Sam, but whether it's with Sam coming back, or you and your Thursday Thoughts, like at the end of this school year, it'd be great to hear how the PE is going and sort of what your prospect is for fall, and that would just be, just to get us excited and keep us in the loop.
I think that's a great idea, is to tell people once that they forgot, but now we're actually bringing it to life and say, hey, we did what we said we were going to do, and this is what it looks like. So, good advice. Left the budget one more mic.
Thank you. So, as Mr. Burke had said, the main driver in this budget is salaries. And so one of the tough things when we're in a situation where we're negotiating with six unions, is it might seem like I'm not really going to be focusing on salaries, and that's deliberate. There's funds embedded throughout the budget, so that the school committee can successfully negotiate with all six unions, but I can't be much more explicit than that. All right, just to make clear that the money is there, and we were able to spread it out among all of the lines. So as we begin putting a budget together, the first thing we need to think about is revenue. So how much money do we actually have in order to develop the budget? And the first number that we have is what we call our operating budget. And so if you look under the purple proposed FY26, Mr. Burke had mentioned the $48.1 million that we received from the town. That is the vast majority of our budget. However, we also enjoy another $4 million in grants and revolving accounts, for a total of about $52 million, and I know that's kind of small. But it's important to note that as we put together the budget for the school system, it's both the operating budget that we get from the town, the $48 million, plus this additional $4 million in grants. We're very transparent about that. So looking at known adjustments, both positive and negative, if you look at the top of that, the Title I, Title II, and Title IV, and IDEA are all entitlement grants, but those fluctuate based on enrollment in those numbers, as well as any given year, it's based on low income percentages. And they did go down coming into FY25 this year, and so I kept them flat for '26. Clearly, we're hoping that we can get a little bit more money next year, but it's more conservative to budget those flat, or budget for what we have in '25 right now. We did receive a little bit more money in the Medco grant, another $23,000, and so we're grateful for that. So I was able to offset some of those negatives with that '23. And I kept our circuit breaker number flat at 1.8 million. Remember, circuit breaker is always a year behind. So it's based on last year's spending in FY24. So 1.8 million is appropriate there. In FY25, our spending actually is a little bit more in special education initiatives, again, a moment, it's going to be even higher in FY26. Nothing that we can't absorb, but what it will do, it will increase that number over time. So again, just to be conservative, I kept it at 1.8 million for FY26, but the expectation is that it will be a little bit higher, and provide us an opportunity to deal with that volatility that we talked about earlier. That's the primary way we handle that. So we under-budget the revenue, knowing that any student can commit at any time, anything could change, and any, a little bit of extra money we get in circuit breaker will help that volatility. If we don't need it, it just rolls into the next fiscal year, we have it for the next fiscal year, so we never lose it. And then if we look at our revolving accounts, I significantly increased the non-resident tuition line, we had budgeted $225,000. But if you'll see the actuals there, we're all in excess of $300,000, and so I corrected that. And so, you know, there's no reason, I'm all for being conservative when we need to be, but in a situation like this, where we are looking for any available source of revenue, I corrected that for $320,000 next year. I kept our early childhood receipts and our bus fees the same, though those are pretty consistent. I did challenge Mr. Payne to get another $5,000 in sports events receipts, which I'm sure he can do, and if you look at the, the actuals, we'll be just fine there. And for the first time, I'm budgeting PAC as some revenue. So, yeah, I was thrilled to do that. So so far this year, we've actually taken in $11,000 in PAC revenue, and so I'm challenging myself to earn another $9,000 for $20,000 this year, and for next year to break that to $35,000. I think it's appropriate, and it's, again, it's a measure of transparency to show that while that is an expense on the budget, there's also revenue coming. So taken together, it's an additional $120,000 from grants and revolving, plus the $896,000 that Mr. Burke had mentioned earlier. And then how does that translate into salaries and expenses? All right, I'm missing a slide here, but, okay. Let's look at these pie charts first, and then we'll jump into the actual salaries and expenses. So this, well, that's actually why not, we'll go from, from the top to the bottom. So this breaks it out by building, and you can see individual percentages by building, and that's simply based on enrollment. And you'll notice, in this budget, most of our money goes toward construction and goes toward the building. As Mr. Burke had mentioned earlier, salaries versus expenses, 79% is salaries, and then the rest of that is expenses. And you might be wondering, you know, if we poured more money into salaries and less into expenses, why didn't that percentage change? Because it was 80/20 last year, and it didn't change because we did have to add $400,000 to the added district tuition line. And so at the end of the day, it's still 80/20, we just reapportioned some of it a little bit. But that's an appropriate staffing level. We maintain our commitment to our current staff, but we do need that 20% in expenses to do everything else that we've been talking about, and that we'll continue talking about in a little while.
Tom, just a clarifying question, and this is my non-accounting brain. So in the first pie chart, you called it expense summary for each building and then functional area, and then the second pie chart was salary versus expenses, but in the first pie chart, I assume salary is included as an expense?
It is.
Okay.
It is, I apologize for that, I should have said salary slash expense.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm not looking at the wrong. Okay.
And then finally, just because it's of interest, regular education and special education, so about basically 75% of our budget roughly is regular rent, and I think 25, 28% is special education. Again, that went up a bit because of the added district tuition increase by $400,000. Normally, it's 75/25, it's a little bit different because of that increase in added district tuitions.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
The first expense, you went so fast, I can't, sorry. The first pie chart, salary slash expenses, I'm curious, when you look around the state or other, other states, is the percentage of the central expenses compared to other parts of the district, is that pretty comparable, like in terms of the proportion of spending?
I think so. I mean, we run a pretty tight shift, that's all of us.
Okay, that's what I was just, okay, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think so.
Okay.
And don't hesitate to slow me down, please.
Before you, just was thinking about, back to that special education cost, just because it was kind of front of email today, with, there's just like another, again, it's not the first time, sort of lobbying for this something, about this, this Fed cost, the districts around the state are difficult to run, people are, that's a huge portion of what's sort of really crippling budgets, but obviously, it's, it's a needed piece, like we need to do these, we need to support special education. So I don't know if there's anything from leadership sides, or what you all are hearing, or like Bill through superintendent channels, or business director, any, any lobbying or, yeah, anything going on over there?
It's always on our minds. It's six-figure volatility, which makes it so difficult. I think, you know, last year or two years ago, we sustained a 14% increase in all the Fed tuitions. Our big lobbying now is to kind of flatten that off. You know, let's go back to the 2% to 4%, that was sort of predictable from year to year, you know? And as I mentioned, you know, we added $400,000 to those lines, but we're down, students going out, district, we're down three kids. So it's sort of different, you know, that way, that they're just much more expensive than what's needed for those students. But again, we have a commitment to supporting those students, making sure that, again. The one thing that I'll say that we do very well here is transportation. And so a lot of other districts will contract out transportation completely, and that gets very, very expensive, whether it's Fed or regular rent. So by having our own vans, by increasing our vans and our drivers, we're actually spending less money than other districts on the same thing. So that's an area where it's specific to Citu, but it does help us out.
Yeah, it just seems like it's such a, it's an enormous problem that's happening with budgeting conversations that are happening among school committee members, so, yeah, I guess we're just, we have, seem to have a good handle on it right now.
We do. The only other thing I'd add, and, and just again, going out on a bit of a limb, we do have a special education reserve fund at the town level, but there's very little, there's no money in it. That could change over time. So if we were in a situation in FY27 or FY28, we, you know, we had to introduce an article to add money to that, add a free cash or something like that, that's another way towns handle that volatility. We haven't had to do that yet, but to be brutally honest, if we're in another situation that 2% increase next year, that's going to be one of my recommendations in order to handle that volatility, because we won't be able to.
Yes, okay, good to know it's coming down line.
Yeah, my comment on that simply is, I know a little bit about this, I don't know that much about it, but I'm going to say there's a department called the Operational Services Division, I know Tom probably knows what I do, but inform the committee maybe. There's an Operational Service Division, referred, called OSD, and they set these tuition prices. So from my perspective, the lobby should be to the Operational Services Division. I kind of have firsthand, firsthand experience where the organization will just send, we're going to increase our tuition by X amount, and I guess they approve it.
Right.
So from my perspective, as a committee or as a district, we could lobby the OSD and say, can you help us here and justify some of these tuition increases?
Yeah.
And there is a website, you can go and check all the cost of every single in-state approved placement.
Interesting.
Just piggyback on both that. Yes, it's a huge problem, true of Massachusetts, we're also super tenants, because it's something we can't control, and it always goes up, including traditionally, I think it was 4% or 5%, you can kind of count that, and that one year jumped to 14, and, you know, there was advocacy to get some of that money back, and now it's been a couple of years, we're never going to see it. But the prices continue to go up, so depending on your district, it can be a real backbreaker for a lot of school districts, so it's a little bit out of our control. There is, at the Mass Association of School Superintendents, advocacy regularly to fight that, and try to have the government give us, you know, lower prices or some control over that, or some predictability. Even in the reimbursement of the outer district, that is not always at as high as it could be, depending on what the government gives us, that's, you know, we get, we just have to deal with the type of stuff, so. So I think just being creative or smart, and things like Tom talked about, like the things we can't control, like purchasing or investing in our own transportation, knowing that that's always going to be a really expensive piece of that, that we can reduce that cost and help balance the budget a little bit better.
I'll reach out to them. There's a phone number, there's actually a phone number right here, I never realized that.
I think you should.
I will.
More intimidating.
I will call this phone number.
Yeah.
Jaclyn, Jaclyn Brown is the Director of Special Education. There's a website of the Mass. I'll call her, yeah, I will.
Sure, I changed another.
Did you see that Mass? Another push just sort of like finds, it's.
I did.
It really is that volatility piece, like the cost can, yeah.
It's, it's just such a big cost, and then when it goes up by 5% or 10%, it's.
A six-figure swing.
Yeah, it's a six-figure chip.
Quoted, yeah, quoted Tom, a six-figure swing. You don't hear that very often.
No, and that's the one, everywhere you see them.
It's huge, Tom.
I wrote that down, so.
We're using it blindsided mid-year, the costs are going up.
We work hard, and I have to give a lot of credit to Dr. Boebert, she just, every day, this is on her mind, even this morning, we were talking about changes in places, every single day, we're just talking about volatility.
I was the boss of that, my own mic. So, the, I think just another example, because we constantly looking at this and trying to save money, anticipating that there's a lot of pieces of it that we can't control, but we only can look at what we can control. So I remember five years ago, when I hired Dr. Boebert, we're upside down, and I'm just spending in Citu, considerable millions and billions of dollars. And so when she assessed things, she said, well, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things we can do in Citu to keep our children here, not have to send them out, that's the whole goal. So we invested in some of our programs, the JIMs programs, middle school, summer programming, and bringing kids here and actually charging them, so some creative revenue streams have come in, so I think with all those things combined, it's smart people working hard on it to do, try to keep all of our kids here that we can, and it's something that we just can't service here, and that's great too, that they need to go to places that better serve them, because ultimately, it's about the child. But I think that was another big move, it's, it saved us a lot of money, and now I think we've had even a couple of kids that have come back from our displacement into the schools this year, because we've established programming that their parents were comfortable with, that we've improved on. So that's something that we'll continue to work on and invest in, because ultimately, it's better savings, we can provide students that opportunity and meet their needs here in town with our teachers, and that's the goal.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, and I mean, along those same lines, that volatility exists even in district, we just don't talk about it much, but you know, those students are still, when they go preschool to kindergarten, they go kindergarten, first grade, fifth grade to sixth grades, eighth grade to ninth grade, that same volatility and that same challenge from Dr. Boebert to move staff around and accommodate what we need to do in order to meet the needs of those students. So it's something that we're working on every, every single day. And the one thing that I was going to mention later, but it seems appropriate now, there's no player to be named later in this budget. So I kind of always like to do that, to have somebody in there for kindergarten enrollment for a special education situation. And because of the belt tightening, because of the 2% increase that we've seen, I wasn't able to maintain that in this budget. So that's just a worry, but it's something that's, that's part of the risk of a 2% budget, nothing to lose, I sleep about, but it's certainly there as an issue. So as we talked about the expense summary, again, this slide just lets me bring up the point that our elementary principals do get paid, but we have made a commitment not to put individual salaries up here, so I try not to do that. And later on, we'll take a look at the supply lines. In almost every case, except technology, the, we have tightened up considerably in expenses, and that's the belt tightening that we need to do in order to maintain the current staff. And I think if I had anything I want everybody to remember coming out of this, is that we are making a commitment to our current staff, and that there's a cost to that, there's a commitment to that. Again, we've talked a bit, if you look at the bottom there, for special education, there it is $3.9 million, so that's about $200,000 more than I budgeted last year. But transportation at 535 is almost on the per district. So again, that's where we're saving here in Citu, by running our own vans. That's not to say we don't have some added district or contracted services for transportation, but it's nowhere near, what about a lot of other districts are dealing with. Again, I can certainly answer any individual questions, but this is all laid out in a bunch of quotes, every number. Every number here has several pages of the budget book behind it. Um, I was trying to do more of an overview tonight and then get into more of the details on that. But again, looking at central office, um, and then the different budgets all the way together with athletics, athletics is pretty flat, you'll see that in a moment. Um, moving into next year, we get a little bit of money to account for negotiating with the school committee and the coaching salaries. Um, technology, there's a bit of an increase, I'll show that later. But again, the bottom line here is we have $52.3 million, and we budget right to that $52.3 million. I think that's the important thing, um, you know, we use every available cent that we have. So beginning with athletics, it's funny, athletics was at the front of the presentation, and I was trying to remember why, and last year, Mr. Payne had leaked early, so now he's just in the front of the presentation for the rest of the time that I worked. So I probably could move it at some point, but, um, there really isn't a whole lot to talk about. It, it's a flat budget, it basically is just contractual obligations. Um, we have a strong athletic budget, $969,000, it's a strong athletic budget, we run a strong program. Um, and so I think as financially, um, it's well-resourced and it has the money that it needs.
I think the fact that we're able to continue, sort of sometimes it's the unspoken, that's the story, and we're able to continue what we've been doing, which is not charging athletic fees. That's an easy, something that I've seen added into other districts' budgets to make up for some money that they need to find, and we're able to keep that cost off of families, which I think is really, really impactful, with how expensive everything is in life, to, to not have to have that when you have multiple children playing sports at the high school, or is, is very, I think it's a good commitment that we're, a testament to the budgeting that we're doing, and we're able to keep that off families.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that, uh, generally, because I think that's another, um, little trick or strategy. So, um, the other towns may be in a tough situation, they're caught in a tough situation where I cut, do I cut a classroom teacher, or do I add fees for communities? I think that's really when you get to bind, and again, I think we were very part of the fact that we, we got rid of kindergarten fees, that's what, about 500,000 per community, and the athletic fees for the next year and year two, which were 220,000, uh, which you've saved, for all those who have read closely, and I know you have, Kane, the My Thursday Thoughts, uh, six pages, it, it saved the towns to date $3 million by not having those in there, and we have no intention of bringing them back. And that's also something we've talked about, we can say that we don't, you know, once they're gone, that was our commitment five years ago, was that they're gone, that we have to be frugal, smart, and I think I've said this enough, but for all the people sitting behind us tonight, everyone here had to make sacrifices in their budget. Everyone would have liked even just a level of service, I'd like a couple of books here or a couple of, we're gonna have to wait a year. Everyone got that message loud and clear, and really been the first place where I had to say that, where there wasn't a lot of, you know, hem and haw, and it was, we understand, we trust the process, we're gonna move forward. So I think we'll, us being able to do that at the individual department level and central office level, we are able to avoid overrides right now, overrides and bringing back any fees. Hopefully eventually get rid of one of our last fees, which is not a possibility here, but eventually we may see us getting rid of the bus fees in better times.
It's like a retirement goal for you.
It is.
I'm gonna just twist that a little on you. Can you do it?
If I retire from this district, we will not have bus fees. Even if it's on the way out, next September, I have to deal with it, I'll, I'll do it.
There'll be no buses.
It's the school committee vote.
No, it's Mike's role.
Yeah. Bike or a bike?
So what I did, uh, for the rest of the presentation, at least for the schools, is I summarized the staffing as well as the money that goes behind the staffing. And I'm gonna move pretty quickly through these slides, but I think when you look at the proposed, the proposed FY26 and the FY25, which is the budgeted number at FY25, I think you update that top column, that is as proposed, um, you'll notice in almost every case, the expense line, which is toward the bottom for supplies, it's called supplies here, um, went down, and that's the belt tightening that we talked about. In some cases, it's a little bit more pronounced than others. Um, at Cushing and Hathley, I didn't add money for additional, um, furniture and sort of things that I did at Wampanoak Jenkins, um, so it wasn't as bad at those schools. But it was really a good part, like Mr. Burkett said, of all the department heads, you know, that's the trust that we built, that's the credibility that we built, that they're gonna get what they need to, to run the district, and so I don't find them padding the budgets at all. They're very careful about what they need, and if there's something that they want, if we can find a multi-year approach to that, if we can find a way to do that over time, uh, we're gonna do that, and, and they know that from talking to me. You know, I might say we can't do it all in one fiscal year, uh, but how can we break that out over three? And maybe, you know, we do the electrical work one year, we do the computers another year, and then we do the furniture another year. And I think, and they know that, um, because we honor those commitments, they're not afraid to adjust the money supporting them. That's, that's huge. I didn't, I don't see that in many places. Again, the blank spots are simply just our commitment to not showing individual salaries. And the other story here is that the FTEs are flat. So from 25 to 26, the FTEs are flat. You might see in some other buildings, adjustments from 24 to 25, as we talked about last year, um, and I've accounted for any hiring that we did this year, but we are not proposing any additional staff for FY26. And I wanted to make that transparent and explicit on this. So you'll see, we're maintaining our, our commitment to those, to those, the staff. There might be adjustments building to building, like I mentioned earlier, the special education, but the total FTEs is not changing. Um, so again, I can work quickly through the elementary schools. Um, I'll put this PowerPoint online tomorrow, so if anybody who wants to see it, if a community member sees it and asks a question, they're welcome to reach out.
Perfect.
Um, but again, similar, Hathley, um, they actually saw a little bit of an increase in supplies. They got last year, um, they were a little bit too lean. I recognize they're putting a new school up, but they still have to live for another year or two, so, um, I did need to add a little bit to that.
All that's happening.
And then, uh, with Jenkins, right now, with the budget the way it stands, uh, at both Jenkins and Wampanoak, I wasn't able to support the additional $25,000 that we got in the boot tables and chairs. Um, that's not necessarily completely off the table, but at least as far as budgeting's concerned, um, we couldn't sustain that, um, as part of the belt tightening. And again, our commitment to staff, we just made a commitment to maintaining staff. Um, and so that required us to, to think creatively about some other things. Um, but the staffing is the same, particularly at Jenkins. And, and when you see, you know, FY24 to 25 and additional two FTEs, those are paraprofessionals that we need to add for special education concerns at 25, and almost always, if you see an increase, that's where it is. I did advance this. I promised the other three schools were in the presentation. There we go, okay. Similar at Wampanoak, um, the only real downside there is I couldn't sustain that. Um, and with special education, that's down simply because of new hires. So when we have people retiring, hires come in, the number itself might be down, but the commitment to the seven FTEs is there. And I am going a little bit quicker here. Um, in early childhood center, you might see a couple of fewer paraprofessionals from 25 to 26, that was more of a clerical era. So they were just misrepresented in last year's budget, so adding them in the actual Wampanoak salaries and then subtracting it from ECC just made more sense. And then here's Jenkins, okay, now we're going the other direction. Gates, oh, oh, I see, there are gates. So similar, Gates, we stay with 91 FTEs, moving from 25 to 26. Um, there is an increase there in expenses, and that's primarily around the new social studies curriculum. So I had put $200,000 in each line, um, last year in the high school and the middle school for the social studies curriculum adoption, um, just for the textbooks, the PD is elsewhere. And there'll be more money this year in this year's budget to start that ban term, so we can get that completely done. Um, last year, the way I did the textbook adoption for math, I did it based on enrollment, which was kind of really mathematically difficult. This year, I just divided by two, so I put 200 in each line. It doesn't really matter, other than the fact that it just changed its sentences.
The line in the budget book that we had that says, it's a column, says FY26 COL period, is that education level or something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so a new feature of the budget book this year is I put everybody's step in line.
That, okay, that's what I'm saying.
So if you were curious, everybody step in. I did that more as a nod towards negotiations, because as we're negotiating, it just gets a sense of freedom. Um, at the high school, um, you'll notice that while we're committed to the same number of staff, it is $223,000. Last, part of that is the correction for the textbooks. Also, you might remember last year, we had given the high school $150,000 in expense funding to do things like the gym foyer reconstruction, as well as the, um, the cafeteria floor, foyer out here, the floor, that was a one-time thing, like Mr. Lorander knows that, the lights, we did LED lights, we did all kinds of little improvements here at the high school. Um, that was a one-time expense, so. The computer loves to go back to Jenkins. Here we go. Okay, so again, same staff from FY25 to 26, and these are simply contractual obligations that we have. Again, anybody who is on this list that is in one of the bargaining units, there are funds available to properly negotiate with them. Um, but I think the, the one thing that is very strong here in Cituit, you asked me about, you know, how do we compare to other districts, having three full-time VCPAs is huge. Um, not a lot of districts have that. And what it does is it allows our staff to have that kind of consultation, as is, the, the problem with a, with a consultant VCPA is they're not always on-site when you need them. So when you have somebody here, and we have three of them, which is a, a strong commitment to that. My computer just decided it is not gonna be happy today. Okay. And again, special education district expense, the big story here is the additional $400,000 in special education expenses, um, private school tuition, collaborative tuition, actually collaborative tuitions went down, but our private school tuitions went up. Everything else is pretty flat. Um, special education drivers, I actually had brought that down a little bit, I had put some additional funding in there last year when I wasn't really sure how things went, um, and I found out this year that we could, we could live without it. So the, the driver for these increases is all at a district tuition. Central admin salary, same, same staff.
Thomas, quickly, the, um, collaborative tuitions went down, the dump, the numbers of students going, the collaborators went down.
By three, yeah, the number went up, but I'm not 100% sure if there was a correction or the number of students went down. Yeah, to be perfectly honest.
That kind of works.
So it worked out to a $400,000 increase. And then this is our central office staff, again, all the positions that we are aware of our budget here. And then expenses. And so here, this is, you'll see some of the belt tightening, right? So I, I belt tightened this by about $60,000 in contracted expenses. That's for the consultants and different things, um, Mr. Burkett, I talked, we were able to bring that number down a little bit, um, you know, we did have a technology consultant, now that we have tech director, and she's working great, we need to put that person on there. So we're able to belt tighten a little bit there. And with student activities, um, that number in FY24 and 25 was a bit overstated for negotiations because we weren't quite sure how that was gonna land, um, so I was able to cut back a little bit there. And, uh, again, with utilities and gas, we'll see how it goes. I'm, I'm, right now, I'm pretty hopeful that, you know, gas prices aren't too bad. Um, but the major part of the belt tightening that we did was in central administration expenses, and that, again, is just a decided, just a question, quite a decision. Technology salaries, again, same tech staff, they're doing great. Um, and technology is the one area where we didn't belt tighten. So I recognize that we needed to add to technology. It's been underfunded in years past, we relied on articles from the talent about it, fund of technology. Um, and as far as I'm concerned, technology is just like electricity and gas and everything else, because we have to be able to fund appropriately. And so you'll see over time, we've made a pretty significant increase in 24, 25, and 26. Um, what we have going into 26, which is very helpful, is the remainder of the $400,000 switch art. So even though the cost was $400,000, we're only gonna be charged about 200 because of E-rate funding and cover the difference, so we can use that difference to buy the homos for the ninth grade next year. So that's extraordinarily helpful. And she, um, Mrs. Frangello can also use additional E-rate funding, uh, low six figures, 130, 135,000 dollars for some of the cybersecurity work that Mr. Burkett is talking about and the server that Mr. Burkett is talking. So it's a one-time opportunity, but this is how we slowly increase the tech budget. We increase it a little bit, and then we'll have to make more with it in the 27. Um, but this is probably the one area where we knew we were underfunded, and despite the challenging times that we're in financially, it was not an area we could come back. Um, in curriculum, uh, we took a small little hit. Again, we've had a pretty significant increase in curriculum from 23 to 24 to 25. Um, it's down to 449,000 FY26, and, and that was just a little bit of belt tightening in, um, the curriculum revisions line, and there's money available to do that in other places in some of the curriculum revisions. Again, we had to belt tighten somewhere, um, $30,000 appropriate, but still left, uh, Mr. Lynch and the team enough to do the social studies implementation, any additional math implementation that needs to happen and so forth. Um, again, the takeaway from this whole presentation is we've kept technology and we've kept curriculum strong, and we've maintained our current staff. So again, your budget book has detail for every single one of those lines. And then I talked about transportation. We are very lucky here that we run our own transportation. Um, it was a nominal increase just to put some money in place to negotiate successful. And that is it. That's the quick version, we'll do the longer version. Thank you.
Thank you. I wonder, have any additional questions or feel good about, if you've been along the way tonight, so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I think we talked about this last year, what are you thinking preliminarily around, um, you know, adding some demonstration of ROI for like last year's, right? Like we, we did a lot, I think you did a lot, we, the central office did a lot to sort of in the blue book, that budget book highlight, that the money we've invested here, this is what we're seeing. So I wonder, given some of the discussions we've had about math and the lit work, and, um, I mean, there's so many places where we're investing money, like what could we sort of share with the public as we're asking for budget? Just, uh, I just think it's really important in a, especially in a tight budget season to be able to demonstrate that these investments. I think it's obvious, like the high school, you know, physical changes are evident, you know, and you just pull up to the building and you can see the new signage, and so that stuff is clear. I think what's less clear sometimes is some of the programming. So outside of MCAS and things like that, like what could we show and share with our community to say, you know, the investment we're making in social studies this year is definitely gonna give us ROI because we're, like what we're doing in these other places, so.
They're taking furious.
Yeah, I see that. I just think that was more of us.
So we're definitely incorporating that.
Yeah. That helps us, too, I feel like. It gives us talking points out in the community to be able, that's why I wrote your six-figure fluctuation, because I will be able to use that at some point.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last thing.
You're still up.
Real quick, yeah. So, um, Ms. Chula and Mr. Newton went through all of our books for local language and science and tech ed, and really kind of did a deep dive and looked at curriculum materials that we just simply don't love using, um, and took the time to make a list. So there's quite an extensive list of books that we have that we simply aren't using and don't need, um, and with the committee's permission, I'd like to declare them surplus so that we can sell them and don't make them.
Sure. All right. Do we need to vote on that? Yes. Yes. Make a motion on the summer 2024 surplus.
Uh, I make a motion, uh, that we.
I make a motion that we approve the summer twenty twenty-four surplus as premente.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Assistant Superintendent Lynch, with the draft of twenty-five, twenty-six calendar, one of my favorite days of the year.
If the budget wasn't enough, would we have to talk about the calendar?
Not to be overshadowed at all.
Heavyweight night.
Yeah, I don't want to steal any thunder from Tom, so this is going to be short and the budget might, so. It's a short one that.
But equally important.
We want to work into that, so.
Big stuff.
So if it pleases the committee, perhaps I could just give a brief overview of the calendar, and then people can.
That'd be great.
Then you can provide some feedback if that works. So with the calendar, you've had a chance to peruse. There are just some reminders about student learning time regulations, that we need to make a schedule for a hundred and eighty-five days. That schools must operate for a hundred and eighty school days. And that students in the elementary go nine hundred hours per year structured learning time, secondary does nine ninety. So in the calendar that's presented to you, we've worked with our principals and our professional development committee met last week as well, to make a calendar that's going to meet the learning needs of students and follow the contract. So on the calendar in front of you, the teacher return date, as stated in the lower right-hand corner, would be August twenty, Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, and Thursday, August twenty-eighth. We do not have teacher professional development on that Friday, as is characteristic of how we've operated. School would open Tuesday after Labor Day for grades one through twelve. And then PK and kindergarten would open on Wednesday, September third. With the input of our elementary principals and ECC, we can open our PK day on the same day as K. We have two staff professional development days. We had some discussion around the fall one, and what we determined was once, basically two out of every four years, there'll be elections at the federal level. And so we made the November professional development day, the first Tuesday in November, to provide some amount of consistency with that date. In the contract, there's four full professional development days, so with the Tuesday in November, that's three, with the other two start dates in August. And it's our preference to have the fourth one in March, when we can have another day later in the year to look at how our students are performing, to work together collaboratively. So that proposed date is Monday, March sixteenth. Finally, parent conferences, we've scheduled for December eleventh for the elementary and middle school. And high school, we're still working on the format for that, but we landed on December eleventh because we want to make sure it's after our first trimester at the elementary, as well as at the middle school. So working with our principals, we determined that that's the best date. We know that's a busy time, but we also feel like it's, we have best information to share with the parents about how their students are doing. So that's a little bit about the thinking that went into the calendar. The last thing I would say is there was some discussion in the PD council about the desire for collaboration time across our grade levels, particularly at the elementary level. This year, we've been able to provide some of that even on the full professional development days. There was, you know, some talk about could we add more half-days to provide that opportunity for elementary? And we thought about, is there another way to meet that same objective with more collaboration time? And so we're trying to think about ways to bring grade levels together without necessarily having to use the early release. So that's how we came to make these decisions around the calendar. And I couldn't try to answer any questions the committee may have or preferences for a calendar.
It would be, last day of school is the eighteenth.
Correct, on this, on this. Correct, that would be day one eighty. It's a federal holiday on June nineteenth. And then per DESI, we have to make a calendar for one eighty-five to show families what would happen on snow days, so that's correct.
I have a couple silly formatting questions. Just in the middle, though, the, it was just a spelling error, Thanksgiving, right in the middle, it says Thanksgiving. Yeah, Thanksgiving is spelled wrong. Sorry, I just, I don't know why my eyes go to that. And then the other one, I, the formatting is, and it's right, December twenty-third, it's a half-day. Just when I quickly looked at it, I'm like, wait, it's a full day off. So I don't know, just a note on the visuals of the calendar. But that's good. And I think I like what you said, Ryan. I was, when I first looked at the calendar, I'm like, why are we having a PD day on November fourth? But the expectation is that every year, every year, whatever, there's elections, so schools are closed anyways. I just didn't like the fact that we have Veterans Day, so there's only one full week of school in the month of November. But I like your idea that just to be consistent, we're going to be closing down every other year, whatever the calendar is, that first Tuesday in November makes some sense. But my only concern in this particular year is that there's only one full month, one full week of school in November. That's all I have.
I'll start with the PD. I think, first of all, I still would like to see if we can find a way to move non-national elections out of schools. Like, I think presidential makes a ton of sense, but for some of the smaller elections or primaries that are happening, I would really love to see if we could do that, so that we're not so dictated by election calendars. I understand the thought about making the second Tu, or the first Tuesday, just giving it off if we know that it will be off in the future. But I do think that this calendar is presented, having a Tuesday off one week, then another week having a Tuesday off is very hard for families. I just think, you can kind of scrape together childcare sometimes, you know, but having to do it two weeks in a row, I think this is really hard. And I wondered about if it would be possible to think about moving that PD day to the Monday before, so that, you know, you're still finding childcare for two days, but potentially it's a little bit easier and, you know. So I just, that was one thing I had wanted to mention. And then I will bring up something that might be unpopular, but I wonder about whether it might be time to consider starting the school year before Labor Day. I feel it's unpopular.
It's unpopular, but it's not.
But it's not unpopular. Okay, so here's the thing. I think we have surveyed families. We didn't get a huge number of responses, but the responses we got showed only a ten difference, ten-point difference between before and after. So I don't think it's a widely hated thing.
Right.
We've had public comment in the past on this, and I think it's right that we need to think about just the academic implications of social school sometimes very late in September when other districts are starting earlier. And, you know, for some of the, this just, it just puts us behind from the get-go. I think that's, you know, we've also heard from families about the difficulties of finding childcare for those final weeks when camps are no longer, college kids are back in college, and it's like September eighth, and we saw it start school. So I just think that that is worth consideration.
Sports at the high school already started.
Yeah.
Things are recorded.
Yeah, sports at the high school have started already. I also think that this is part of what makes the end of the year challenging.
Yes.
Juneteenth being a holiday now that it used to exist. If we do not start school before Labor Day, we are always going to be publicly against it. We've had several very awkward endings to the school year, where it's like, you know, get Thursday off, but come for a half-day Friday, or get Friday off, but come for a half-day Monday, you know, it's just.
A lot to manage.
It's a lot to manage. So I think I would like to propose that we think about that seriously. Another thing that we could think about doing, what I think would be helpful, would be, since we know where Labor Day falls each year, we could look ahead a couple of years at a time. And some districts do this on the calendar that they publish. It'll tell you the following couple of years, when the first day of school will be, because I think that predictability factor is very important.
Yeah.
I do worry a little bit that if we make this change this year, we will get some, we will definitely get some negative feedback from people who've already planned vacations.
And if it's failure.
It is, and we still have our six-plus months out, but still, you know, I know that that's a, that will be a real factor for some families.
September, it's September.
But if we can, if we can do that going forward, we'd have more families able to plan confidently, you know, knowing what the first day of school will be. But my last comment on this is just that this year, Labor Day falls particularly early, September first, and we still find ourselves backing up to Juneteenth at the end of the school year.
Right.
It's just, it's, that's the earliest it's going to ever be, and it's still.
I don't know whether they have Good Friday off either.
What'd you say, Karen?
I don't know.
Good Friday, they have Good Friday.
Good Friday, yeah.
Seems, it seems like observing some religious holidays, but not others. So I feel like it's either we do, we either do them all in a time, or we, but I don't know, I'm just, it's just a question.
I did see, I think Bill mentioned this too at some point, somewhere, that as a capacity, had Good Friday as a school day, and they had.
A lot of absolute.
Yeah, a forty percent.
Yeah, I do get to. To give you another community, because if you haven't done that survey question, that I picked some of the surrounding towns. And others, they found, it is not contracted, you take two registered days. So it's not a personal day, not a vacation day, it's given to you. So they found that twenty-five or thirty percent of staff was, and children, driving that holiday, so that's something to consider. Might be what the survey. But just to follow up on, if I might, I have the survey data here, it's pretty much fifty-fifty. That's what it's been for five years, so I don't think it's.
Yeah, it's been pretty consistent, yeah. Yeah, I did a little bit of looking ahead at the calendar, so this year, if we did, if we kept our pattern of two days of teacher professional development, Monday, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth of August, that would mean kids coming back the Wednesday and Thursday. Friday off for everybody, which is what we've always done and what is in the contract. And then the full, first full week of school would then start on Tuesday, September second. The next two years, Labor Day bumps to being later again. But if we still kept that same pattern of Monday, Tuesday, teachers, Wednesday, Thursday, kids, the kids would start the second, have school the second and the third, and then officially start everyone back. That's only the first week being the September eighth. And then twenty twenty-seven, it's almost the same, except it's September seventh.
I think the, one of the most compelling points is about the time on learning and just the fact that, you know, discussions have been had about AP exams happen when AP exams happen, and constituent and every other district are, we're all taking them at the same time, and our kids have a week less prep time over, you know, the fifty-fifty split on Labor Day.
That's true for MCAS too.
And MCAS.
I mean, those first two days of school, it's a lot of settling in and routines and things like that. But if some of that is done out of the way, it can really hit the ground running much sooner in September. It really, I think it really is a big deal, even though it might sound like.
Totally.
I just, I don't know.
Yeah. I also think the athletics piece is big too. I mean, all those kids are already in the mindset. They're already up here on the high school campus for weeks beforehand, and it's almost like with neighboring towns and so many towns in Massachusetts going back great, we're like sort of lingering, and it's, it's like.
Last year, it felt like we were one of the very last.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot.
Kids still home, everyone's ready. Kids are ready, they need it, parents are ready. Yeah, all the back-to-school picture.
Too much, too much.
Still waiting.
Is it possible, Assistant Superintendent Lynch, to show us maybe at the next meeting what a revamping would look like? A version that was kind of per what Miss Dennis was saying for this school year to add those two days?
Sure, and so just to make sure that I have the feedback correct, it would be the staff return on Monday, August twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, August twenty-sixth. Students returning Wednesday, August twenty-seventh, and Thursday, August twenty-eighth. There'll be no school and no work on Friday, August twenty-ninth, which is the Friday before Labor Day.
So four-day weekend.
Yep, four-day weekend.
And then perhaps our PK and K would start the Tuesday.
Yeah, the Tuesday, sorry, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Just, just one more piece I heard discussed was the November. Is there, is there a wish to move, first, the third professional development day off of Tuesday, November fourth, and move it somewhere else?
I just think that's tough. We've had a lot of that this year, where the calendar feels very disjointed. And I just have heard from a lot of people that that just is really tough when you're trying to plan, you have a random day off. And at least if there was some days in a row, I think people might appreciate that, as opposed to being like, oh, my gosh. You know, I think it's, it's still hard to manage. Any day off is hard to manage, I acknowledge. But I just think that, to me, looks pretty, I already know we're going to get a lot of.
Sure.
I do like the aligning with the federal elections though, because it's going to happen.
I know, but I don't know that consistency year over year is something that people are going to really be like, oh, yes. I don't know, that doesn't seem as important to me as like, I got to find childcare this Tuesday and next Tuesday.
I just mean, they're going to have to find it, even if there isn't a PD day, so.
Well, sometimes if it's an election year that we have the PD day, PD day on. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Well, Veterans Day moves, I think.
Veterans Day moves, yeah.
Right, but the election doesn't, that's why I was like, if you're going to have to find it ready, it's good that we're getting a PD day in.
Yeah, I guess it's just the way Veterans Day is this year. Like, I agree with you philosophically, I just think that this is going to be.
I'm curious about the, I mean, I know it's fifty-fifty, starting before Labor Day, but I'm wondering now that a year again. So if the teachers come in those two days, the kids come in on two days, and then we have four days off, like, at the margin, like, is that, like, is that enough of a gain? I mean, we're talking about two days, and then a huge disruption to the schedule, and then, I mean, with elementary school kids, I don't know about older kids, it's like a, after a four-day break, it's like a total reset anyway. So I'm just wondering, like, if it creates a disruption on the teacher side, I'm just wondering about what's the marginal benefit?
I think the first couple of days, like, you know, the type of getting students is like going through.
Maybe.
Good.
I think too, it also impacts on the other end with Juneteenth on the calendar.
Yeah.
So that pushes us just into the more likelihood of sort of coming into contact with that at the end of the year.
And I would love to buy back another day, actually, somehow. You know, whether it's, I don't know how, but I would really like that too, just to give us even more of a buffer at the end. And to, I agree with you, I don't care exactly, you know, how that would look, but.
So maybe another challenge, maybe it's sort of like, see if there's another, maybe that's the best link current for twenty-five, twenty-six solution that we can come up with is that those two Tuesdays of the road happen to be what the way it is this year.
Yeah.
But maybe, yeah, you know, there's always something, there's always a.
I think it'd be helpful when we present the calendar, if we share that with families, so that they can understand that, be like, okay, start to mentally bookmark that date going forward, maybe that's, maybe that helps, you know, just acknowledging that Veterans Day, you get around, it's going to be the way that it is, you know.
Yeah. I will say too, in the surveys, it, I know it's like sort of fifty-fifty, and it wasn't a.
A super small sample.
It was a small sample, but as I recall, I think even the educator side had it leaning more towards the board, which maybe helps give us insight into like classroom teams, and they like, they tend to.
I'm not opposed to trying it, I'm just, I'm just wondering, I'm not saying no.
Yes.
Yeah, the teachers were fifty-nine before versus forty-five after, so a slightly larger margin.
I mean, I almost wonder if instead of speculating. We happen to have lots of educators in the room.
They go, oh, a bunch of teachers, yes. They want, but that's up to super.
This in terms of, does it help you to have those couple of things, right, like, thoughts?
If there's any volunteers up there.
We also have a council on Thursday, and if people want to sort of collect feedback then, and then we can share it out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But if somebody wants to.
I mean, I, we would generally like to know what the teachers, like, you know, think about.
Look at all these teachers.
Yeah.
Some are parents as well.
What?
It's hard to speak for all.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I think the PD council though is probably a good.
Yeah, yeah.
The wrap meeting is, sure, that would be helpful.
That'd be great.
Happy to do it.
Thanks, thank you.
So next meeting, we'll bring back a revised calendar for your consideration with the points that were made and make sure it has all those elements on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Sure.
I can't wait to see how you script the month of August on this calendar.
I can't wait to see how you script the month of August on this calendar.
Create another month in me.
One font.
It used to be, it was a bit sad, because it's.
I gotta get one page.
It used to be two. I know he backed up to eight.
I think it still might be, I think of the second page that we brought here, it's just the school numbers and.
The first page is just all. I did that one more.
The second page will be school contact information, school.
Which is nice, it's not so digital. I did have one more quick thing, uh, just because, so I, I noticed, um, this year, I think was the first year we tried doing the half day for parent conferences. Uh, and I know that I did hear from some families that that was hard, just because obviously then the parent has a child with them and so. Um, I know some schools will allow for Zoom, um, I don't know if all schools did, but I think that thinking about solutions like that might be helpful for the little kids who are gonna need a babysitter or something, you know, if the parent has to go to the school, but if the parent can Zoom from home, then like, that might work. So I just, I know some schools did it that way, some schools didn't, but that is something to think about. And again, I went sharing this to maybe if we can publicize that and say, hey, this is, these are the options that will be available for you, because I know what that could be.
Also make a good conversation for one of the school committee hours on the subcommittee of negotiations.
Yes.
That would probably come up.
You just test yourself on the job.
Resolve it there.
All right. All right, thank you so much. Up next, uh, celebrate student learning. We have our ELA department chair and our pre-K two-five liter, sorry, literacy department chairs, Desner and Miss.
Uh, all right, well, thank you for having us, we, um, look forward to being able to share with you a little bit about what happens with our readers and writers, um, pre-K to twelve, um, and that's what we wanted to focus on today. Um, I'm second grader, I'm the pre-K to five, um, news coordinator, and the first thing that we wanted to talk a little bit about was, I don't know if, um, any of you have seen the news, but science of reading and reading has been a huge topic, especially in Massachusetts over the last couple of years, and I really wanted to, um, talk about the commitment that Situate has made to ensuring, um, the programming that we're using and, um, the professional development that we're providing to teachers is aligned to that science of reading and we're really making sure that we're using evidence-based instruction, um, with our students. So already, we, um, are in compliance with, um, DESI's early literacy screening, um, guidelines even before those guidelines came out. We've made financial commitments, um, and investments in high-quality instructional materials that are approved by DESI to make sure that they're aligned with the science of reading. Um, and over this last summer, we kind of took a next step and we had, um, a group of educators attend DESI's Dyslexia Institute over the summer. Um, so it was Bennett Croll, who was a special educator, Kelly Ridley and Bob Resch, who are second grade teachers, Mary Oldak, principal, and myself, um, did a three-day institute, really focused on how we can make sure we support all of our students in Situate to, um, be proficient readers and making sure our instruction hits all of the kids. Um, uh, and we're making sure we're using, um, evidence-based instruction. So, as a result of that institute, we kind of went through a long, um, process of inventorying, um, you know, what we currently do and where, um, we could tweak our practices to make sure we're more in line, we came up with a dyslexia action plan. It's a long action plan and we had three really specific areas that we wanted to focus on this summer, so I wanted to share with you, um, those focus areas. The first big focus area that came out of this is we want to make sure that all of our kindergarten through third grade, um, educators have, uh, really focused professional development on the science of reading. So, um, Ryan and I worked together and in that, on that November, um, PD day, we had all of our kindergarten, first grade educators together, really focused on, um, what dyslexia is, um, and how students learn to read, how the brain, um, develops to learn to read, and what instructional practices are aligned to support, um, making sure all students have access to, learn to read at a young age. And we're talking about our youngest kiddos, whether they're kindergarten and first graders here, um, we bought materials to support that, to really think about how, um, our youngest students ortho- orthographically map words and are able to recognize words instantaneously, which is, um, how we become efficient readers. So, we started with kindergarten and first grade, uh, in March on our PD day, we're gonna move that up to second and third grade so that by the end of this year, we really have, um, a robust plan of making sure those early, um, years that all of our educators have the same level of knowledge about the science of reading. Um, and exciting that next month, we are also going to, um, do a similar training with all of our kindergarten pairs. The kindergarten pairs work really closely with those kindergarten kiddos in small groups and one-on-one, so the same kind of training for those pairs as well. The second, um, big thing that came out of that Dyslexia Institute was thinking about our data meeting protocols, um, across the elementary schools, thinking about, um, the data we use, how we look at data, how we use it to make decisions about, um, instruction. So, as a literacy council this year, we're really looking at, um, the data that we use and how we use that, um, data with teachers. We're also, um, in February, taking a look at data with our, um, elementary principals at a district level and really thinking about what are the best ways to support, um, classrooms and kids. The last thing that came out of the Dyslexia Institute, um, was making sure that we're sharing the family reports, um, from DIBELS and STAR Reading. That's actually going to start in this week, we are wrapping up our, um, benchmark period and we're gonna be, um, sending out, um, benchmark letters, usually when we get benchmark letters, you get an indicator saying if your child is better above benchmark or below or approaching benchmark, this time the actual family letters with the scores and an explanation will be attached to all of those. So we're really excited to be able to kind of move forward with that. So, we've made really good progress on, um, you know, the areas that we identified as, as, um, our needs in Situate and we have, um, a bank of things we want to keep moving forward on because this is really something near and dear to all of our hearts as elementary teachers. Sure that all of our kids are, are, are able to be successful readers.
Um, building off what Megan said, um, so I'm Laura Messner, English department chair for grade six to twelve. Um, so I wanted to highlight some of the, um, the culture of reading that we built, um, or that we continue to build in grade six to twelve. Um, we sent five teachers to the NCTE conference this fall, it's, um, the National Townsend of the Teachers Spring, which is widely considered to be the highest quality professional development that's available for, um, English content area teachers. Um, there, they gained exposure to the latest research and findings, literacy education, um, there are, uh, ten thousand English teachers that attended, it's in the mass, this year was at the Boston Convention Center, which is, we went. Um, they, uh, got to meet authors and, um, just gave in workshops, um, sponsored by groups like National Writing Project, um, and lots and lots of others, it was wonderful. Um, teachers there represent grades six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. We have revitalized our, uh, summer reading program this year, um, it started with, uh, well, sort of a desire to constantly refine that, um, that practice is an embedded part of our practice, we want to keep kids reading over the summer. Um, we polled our outgoing seniors to identify a game that we thought we could organize it around and they, um, came up with, like, one thing they wanted to leave, um, the kid, the kids coming up behind was the idea of sort of the power and value of human connection. So I worked with our librarians to source about twelve titles, um, fiction, nonfiction, all different levels, um, and, uh, kids read those and discuss them and then we moved on, um, into the year. It was well received by kids and teachers alike, um, and then do the same thing again with our outgoing seniors again. Um, and the graph on the right, um, is actually identical to the one I showed you last year, except the bar on the right is, on the far right is new. So this data is provided by, uh, one of our two secondary licensed and trained and award-winning, I might add, librarians, um, uh, who, um, have seen record checkouts of, um, kids engaging with reflection. Um, Colin Simpson has also created, I mean, I mean, we're all certainly familiar with the format of the open format of the Games Library, but, um, the accessibility of books, um, she's constantly coming up with new ways to get more books and faster in the kids' hands. She engages with all of the six to eight teachers regularly, um, to expose kids to new authors and new titles, um, and to keep kids reading, independent reading is an embedded part of our six, seven, and eight curriculum as well.
Um, why don't you dig into the data a little bit, um, recognizing that this probably isn't the most ideal time to be talking to you about data as we just, we actually have not even wrapped up, um, our benchmarking, because I'm sure you've heard that from a lot of kids out the last two weeks, so we're doing a lot of makeups for our benchmarks, um, at this point. But I wanted to highlight the beginning of the year data, um, that we have this year, and I know you were talking before on the budget about, um, ROI. I think this, this is DIBELS data, and so DIBELS is foundational early literacy skills. So when we're thinking about those discrete skills that kids need to have to be able to read, they need to be able to segment words into phonemes, they need to be able to blend sounds together into words, we're really looking at those skills and figuring out how kids are doing with those. Um, the current third graders shown here, um, are our first class of kiddos to go through kindergarten all the way from second grade with foundations. If you kind of see the trend line that has gone with that, um, consistent, um, explicit phonics approach, it really speaks for itself. We're doing a really good job making sure we're teaching kids the foundations of reading and making sure that they are able to, um, access the code at a young age. So I think, thinking about how we roll, um, programs out, this kind of shows that we really need to make sure we have the time invested and that kids have time with the same language and the same approach. Um, and we've done, we've done a really great job with making sure, um, that all of our kids are, um, are getting, um, evidence-based, um, instruction in how to read and then we do a good job with those kids who are struggling from kindergarten, identifying them right off the bat and making sure they're getting the interventions that they need so that they're gonna be successful moving forward. Um, this is our STAR, um, reading, um, performance from the beginning of the year, so, uh, the early literacy screening guidance um, asks all Massachusetts districts to, um, give one approved assessment, um, two times a year. We give two, DIBELS and STAR, because we really want to make sure we get, uh, a complete picture of kiddos. Like I said, DIBELS really shows us, um, those foundational skills and STAR is a more holistic approach. We're saying, okay, now we know that they know how to read, are they putting it together and do they understand what they read? So this is the, the, the more global picture. Um, we don't get as great discrete data about, okay, what do we pinpoint to, to support these kids, but we're seeing the outcome. We changed, um, the measure that we use this year, and I think Heather might have talked about this a little bit with you last time when she was talking about MAF. We've been using STAR for over ten years at this point, um, and we've always used, uh, a fiftieth percentile cutoff. Just saying, we, we know that if kids are, um, above the fiftieth percentile nationally, we feel pretty confident that they're doing well. We shifted this year to, um, to the state performance benchmark, which correlates to our MCAS. Um, so what happened when we switched to that, we wanted to make sure we had kind of an early, um, warning system for kids who might be at risk of not meeting expectations in MCAS. So what happened was we're identifying more kids as falling below benchmark than we have been traditionally. Um, we're using it as an opportunity to make sure that we're pinpointing kids who we might have, who were right on the cusp before. It's about ten to fifteen percent of kids that weren't identified before that we're identifying now. Um, it's an early warning system and we're really able to pinpoint, um, those kids that might not have flagged before and as we're having data meetings with teachers now, we're saying, hey, this is a, a, a group of kids who, um, might be flying under the radar, might be looking okay, but they might not, um, be meeting expectations at the end of the year in MCAS. So we're able to kind of reset win time, use intervention time, use small group time to really pinpoint those kiddos too. So, our data when we're looking at this year looks a lot different than it does last year when we're looking at the number of kids who are falling in that needs improvement or at-risk range, but I think it's a really great opportunity for us to make sure we're, we're hitting all of those kids that we might not have been previously.
Um, so what you're looking at this, um, six to twelve, as you may remember from last year, um, last year, starting in January, we began benchmarking using, um, a tool called the T three thousand, which gives a single flexile measure for students. Um, that measure, measures their independent literal text comprehension. Um, and this is now the, uh, the third administration, so this is from the beginning of the year. And so what you see is, um, we have, there's a lot of yellow, particularly in middle school. Um, a lot of kids are falling into approaching and because it's still so new, it's, it's sort of difficult to, um, completely, I understand that, um, as of yet. Um, what we are excited about is we have an official baseline, which is something we haven't had in the past, um, to determine sort of the efficacy of our interventions. Um, at the middle school level, uh, a lot, um, of the students in the lower part of the yellow and the red are students who resurface through, um, literacy program, into STE, literacy specialists at middle school, um, who work, uh, with students in tiers to deliver supportive instruction. And we are collecting our, our middle of the year data as we collected as we speak, um, that should wrap up by the end of January and then, um, have data for a follow-up to see how much that has changed since the beginning of the year.
And then taking a look at the data.
I was gonna take a question.
Oh.
Do you want us to wait to the end?
Um, to you.
I was just curious on the, um, achieve three thousand, if there's plans to share the state of appearance?
Um, there is, so, so as you can, um, imagine, uh, Megan is quite a bit ahead as far as, um, there is also the, the universe of K to five literacy assessment is, um, much further developed than the universe of, of six to twelve, so, um, it feels a little bit like we're building a plan while we're applying it. Um, that is absolutely, um, I think the plan, we'd like to follow a similar model, um, but it's not quite there yet. But although, I mean, um, it is data that we are happy to share on a MAF requested basis, if teachers use it at parent conferences.
Okay.
We use it in our, uh, determinations for students that qualify for literacy and support.
I ask because I think it can be tricky for parents, as kids get older, you kind of don't always know exactly what they're reading, you know, and if, if they're reading. And so I think any additional data points that parents can have to kind of be on top of this, you know, like, hey, you know, I, you're, you're in the yellow, we gotta get you reading more, we gotta make sure you're reading the right book, that type of thing is much easier to do when they're littler and much harder to do when they're older, and so I just can imagine this being helpful for parents actually to understand, like, oh, my kid's not reading at a great level right now, how can I help? You know, it seems to be something that would just be really useful, so I'm glad that it'll be in the plans, that's all.
You want us to know your, whatever they.
Do you want to finish or do you want us to ask now? I don't want to disrupt your flow.
We have.
We might have one more. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Um, looking at all this data, what, what teachers are doing right now, um, in data meetings with literacy specialists is, um, taking a look at this data to make sure we're pinpointing, um, what could be based on, um, this, these interventions. And one, um, shift that we've made this year in the elementary schools that's been really great for our literacy specialists is we're making sure that all of our literacy specialists are able to meet with grade level teams during the common planning time to coordinate the interventions that, uh, literacy specialists are, um, giving to students. that literacy specialists are giving to students with the classroom instruction. We're already using the same language, we're using the same approach of foundations. And we're talking about those foundational skills. But we know that kids can't make gains in isolation. They have to, we have to make sure that literacy specialists are working with classroom teachers so that we're filling in those holes of, of what they've missed, but we're also making sure that they can access the curriculum that's being presented in private. So our literacy specialists are doing a great job of coordinating with, with classroom teachers for that and, and are highly trained in knowing the interventions that can support those kids to be successful in interventions, but then to go back into the classroom and apply those skills.
And at the middle school, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. We do have one more slide back to this. I'm sorry. No, it's okay. We have actually following our MAF colleagues who sort of piloted the model last year. We expanded our literacy support at Gates. So now our literacy lab class for kids who all have the tier three support that can provide them up to four times a week, meaning the literacy specialist to have specialized instruction. For tier two students, they can have up to twice a week during their enrichment block. And we are sort of in the process of reflecting on ways to continue to build that capacity to help quote some of the reactions that you saw. So we wanted to give you a sense of what is next for ELA. So speaking of curriculum review, we are looking at being up, I think, in 27 for ELA, which will involve a comprehensive review of our current curriculum to include our literacy practices, which I'm terribly excited about. It feels timely, if not overdue. So we're very excited about that. Continuing with our expanded literacy supports and also looking at the addition of wind block supports at Gates for new schedule this year.
And I think I hit on most of things what's next for elementary. The last one is just continuing to make sure we have collaboration time for our elementary teachers across schools. Because we're across four schools and we've been able to build in some time for those teachers to collaborate so that they're on the same page, just in practice.
And actually, I should have included up there as well. I mean, we will certainly continue to utilize the T3000 and perhaps explore other tools to use as literacy benchmarks to begin to more brand new, where we define exactly where we need to go to support students in closing gaps and helping skills.
I think an easy question. Thank you for this. This was great. Can we get access to the summer reading list?
Yes.
I'd be really curious to, because some of us don't have kids in the eighth to 12.
So it's always posted into the district website.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know, Bill, maybe you could include that sometime. It would be fun for the community to see what we're reading in the summer. So, did you, if I could get Megan?
Of course.
I don't know, because I know some of you do last name.
So Megan, you mentioned the third graders and the DIBELS score. And I'm wondering, since you have, you know, since they've been doing this new curriculum, is it possible at some point to see longitudinal data? Like, I'd love to see these. I know it's not exactly the same kids, but like to see the, the measures from those third graders when they were first graders and second graders, to see.
The cohort data.
Yeah, the cohort data, just to see how the, you know, it's great that 54% exceeds expectations. It could be even more amazing if we can see the, the growth.
Trajectory.
So maybe that's something we could, you could share with us at some point. The other curiosity I had was when I look at the, again, I'm not an English ELA person. I see the DIBELS score and then we go to STAR reading. Is there a correlation between these two? Is it just that they sort of expand our view of our students as readers? Like, how should I be thinking about those two measures?
So I look at the two measures as DIBELS is a precursor to STAR.
Okay.
They have to be able to read individual words to be able to understand a passage.
Okay.
So it's kind of like the building blocks. When we're looking at how kids did on benchmark assessments. If kids did poorly on both, we have to address the skills of DIBELS first. We can't jump to comprehension if they can't blend words together yet. So it's, they build on each other.
Okay. So like when you look at, I mean, take any of the grades where there's a STAR reading, maybe the fourth grade. So when you look at the fourth grade DIBELS, are you surprised by their STAR? Is this exactly what you thought it would be? Like, you see what I'm saying? Like, does it sort of comport with your story about what's going on with their students?
So I think when we look at this, we, especially this year, we do have more kids in that yellow because of the, the measures that we're using right now. So I think we always knew those kids who are still having trouble decoding, they're having trouble comprehending, that sounds surprised to us. It's kind of that new middle layer that this is exposing of, these kids are doing okay with, with decoding, but something's going wrong with vocabulary or language. That there's something that we have to, you know, focus on and address. And that's what we're talking about in data meetings this week.
And then the last question is, I know the T3000 is new, but as students go from elementary school to middle school, will you be able to, again, that idea of longitudinal data, will, will there be some, I guess there'll be some loss in translation because they're not actually the same measures, but can you tell a story of growth or not from, you know what I'm saying? Like, is this?
Oh, so yeah, I, I, I think that that's, that's something that we're actively trying to figure out. I mean, they're really very, very, very different measures. And so one thing that we're considering is, is, you know, perhaps, we're just reflecting on whether T3000 is perhaps the best measure for six to eight.
Yeah. So you, so are there comparable? Like to elementary to middle so that you could use almost the same measure?
Yes.
Okay. That seems like it would be something to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Laura mentioned that earlier when she talked about, we're going to look at the assessments that we're using to really, you know, to think about with teachers. Last year, T3000 was used twice. The second administration, the data wasn't perfect. So this, this year, we wanted to keep it consistent, use it twice again, give teachers an opportunity to see what it would tell us and then come back and think, is this, you know, the, the best longitudinal data and to hear what the, the teachers say about it too. So it's a really good question. And many schools do continue STAR through, you know, eighth, eighth grade. So you have a good, you'd have two through eight. But, but then it doesn't really stretch into high school. So we're trying to think about.
But T3000 does.
T3000 goes to, goes to 12. But just to emphasize a point that, that Laura made, when you look at the data that switches from STAR to T3000, as Megan explained, STAR tries to anticipate how students would perform on the MCAS. T3000 shifts dramatically to just identify like Lexile levels. So you would have many, you could have many students who are scoring in the yellow, who are proficient or even advanced scoring students on MCAS because of skills that they've acquired to be really strong, you know, to, to use certain skills that they have while they may not have the highest Lexile level. So I think that's just another thing that Laura has explained and that the department's going to focus on. So it's a, we want to try to find something that's going to serve those purposes.
Would it be fruitful to do, to continue STAR, that's six, at least sixth grade, and see just as a transition to the T3000? And sort of be able to like, all right, these are what these kids look like, you know? They're elementary and then you'll see like what's happening here.
And it's true. Megan and I talked about this last week about, you know, she, she offered the possibility of sort of piloting it with some of the kids, you know, you have sensitive, obviously I just don't want to test them to death. Totally. I want to be mindful of, because every time, every day that we use for assessment, they lose an instruction. So I want to be mindful of that, but yes, I mean, that's the only possibility.
I have a question. I'm trying to comprehend a little bit. I know that we're kind of an odd timing, it's the middle of the year and we're scoring, beginning of year assessments. Do we, do you or do we or can we, do these correlate to end of year, last year assessments? So we've been talking a little about math program and how, you know, summer work. And we mentioned today ELA, summer reading. Is, I'm trying to figure out if it's the summer that's causing these potential scores beginning of the year or is it their last year's competencies that are just maintaining level and correlating into these scores that we're seeing here? I don't know what, what assessments we have that can measure these scores at the end of the year. Just, I just, I'm just curious how much the summer impacts our students or any students.
No, I mean, it's definitely a good question. I, our, as Mr. Lynch mentioned, our, our end of the year data from last year is not, is, is sort of fatally flawed. We learned that our, our Chrome browsers were too up to date for achievement handle. And, and so it was just massively disrupted. I anticipate having much better data at the end of the year this year to be able to use. Although that doesn't help us tremendously more the data that I had in Oregon was. I think that, you know, T3000 makes something that is very, very, very complex look very, very simple. And that it can be a little bit misleading. I think that, you know, we know all reading is good reading. I don't know that.
Yeah, no, I think it's also, I guess I would say, can we look at any grade level and look at, let's look at six through 12. And we're looking at seventh grade T3000 score. Can we correlate that the MCAS scores from their sixth grade are, are similar to what these results are?
Yeah. The correlation is stronger in elementary, the STAR. And Heather and I hit to that for math and reading this year. How do they correlate at the beginning of the year to how they did at the end of the year last year?
Yes.
A pretty tight correlation.
I just think, I'm glad you guys brought up because you're, you're looking at the summer program. And I think that summer is important only because I think it impacts kids differently, but it really sets some kids back dramatically, I would think. I don't, I don't know what the answer is. I think to find books that kids want to read is the most important. I don't know how you find that, but that's for you guys.
Well, we have our licensed trade library. It's like, I think situatist is actually remarkably well-equipped. I mean, phenomenal team librarian at the Central Town Library, phenomenal library. Wonderful, wonderful librarians in our schools here. I think the, the engagement and the possibility is there. I think it's, it's like, I feel a little bit like it's, it's like growing, getting quality and what's next. We'll try anything and everything to get kids excited. But we're also like living the prenaissance of literature right now that's coming out at a pace of, I don't know that anyone can thank you. So I think it's, we're going to try everything on our quote.
Great. Thank you.
I wanted to compliment you on the focus on the science of reading stuff. That feels like it's really made some leaps in the past like year. So I think that's great. And also the move to changing the score on STAR, I think is just a really smart move. I know it can like hurt a little, but I ultimately think obviously we want to know, you know? And the more we know, the more we can serve kids. So I'm really happy to see both of those things. I did want to ask about writing because that's something that we've talked about in the past as being an area of relative weakness for kids. And I know we've had so much focus in the new reading curriculum, reading, 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 science of reading, reading assessments. And I'm just curious if we could give a little update on writing as well.
Sure. So my view, our reading curriculum is, is a literacy curriculum, so includes writing as well. So we have done work and there was some summer work done by teachers. This past summer, we had training from SAVIS from My View come in focused on joyful routines. We wanted to really make sure that we followed that love of reading and infused that love of reading into what we were doing and thinking about the connection of reading and writing and how we can make them more relevant through project-based kind of learning. So we were thinking about, you know, at the end of the unit, is there a culminating project that kids can be doing to apply what they've been learning in reading and, and do some research and have some of these, these writing products? We do have, we've aligned our, our writing units with the units in My View as well. So we've been working at the kind of curriculum level of what does that look like? And what do, you know, end of year assessments look like? But I agree, we've been focusing a lot on the, the science of how do we read words? Our next step is definitely to focus more on writing.
For the six to 12 crowd, I, Mr. Lynch, I've had a few conversations about prioritizing writing-related professional development, which again, maybe is just not something we've done in a very long time. I think there's a lot of excitement, a lot of it stemming from the teachers that attended the NCTE conference and also teachers just sort of noticing that kids are less than inspired to write in a lot of cases, not in all cases, but in a lot of cases. And I think that the question of MCAS being divorced from a graduation requirement has caused us to, has given us pause as far as how we taught writing, especially very, you know, formulaic writing for a long time. So there is, there's actually a subgroup of English teachers who are reading next Thursday at the Central Town Library to study totally outside of school, just because people are jazzed about it, to study two books that we are reading that are both about sort of this exact problem that we're experiencing. And it feels like it's coming at all fronts. You know, we have, we have, AI is a challenge. We have, you know, sort of what, what is next as far as standardized testing or how we're, we're assessing our students' abilities and also just how we bring joy back into writing. So it's a very timely question and I, I don't have anything tangible sort of yet, but I want you to know that it is absolutely an enthusiastic focus in the very near future.
Yeah, that's great. And as a follow-up to that, I was just curious about my annual briefing of teaching kids how to type. Have you made any progress on that? Only because I see it in my own kids, like having to write is one thing. Think of the idea and organize your thoughts and your evidence, all that stuff. That's like a whole task. But then the act of typing is where often it breaks down at home. The punch typing, the frustration. And I just, I would love to see a typing program brought back. A lot of us had it when we were young and a lot of us say, okay, God, we did because we really need to rely on that now. And my kids are, they watch me type and they're like, how do you do that? And I'm like, y'all learned. This is what we did in school, you know? And I just, as we relied more on technology, it feels like something that I just make a strong. I don't know if that's even under your purview per se, but just in general, I feel like it, it ties into talk about bringing the joy back. If they could just do it quickly, that would probably help, you know, bring some joy back.
Yeah, I totally agree. We, we have noticed in the last, since the pandemic, that kids have become more fluent with their typing than they were before. I think just because so much of what you do is through typing. But yes, we talked a lot about in our already packed days, how can we fit in?
I don't know.
Opportunities for this because it, it, we'll gain it on the other end when a sentence writes us. I will tell you, I heard in my house this week, there was a discussion about how in tech, they're putting the paper over the keyboard and creating how to learn. And I brought a smile to my face as they were complaining about it.
It, it may not be a popular topic too. I mean, we're talking about AI and tech, but I also think, I'm sure you both know, there's tons of research that says our kids should still be learning cursive and writing by hand because of the creativity and memory. And so I wonder how we, we balance, right? I know, you know, my kid's like, I'm never going to have to write, I'm going to use a computer. But in the same, same vein, just remembering that like, we don't always have to behold into these problems, right?
Yep.
Does that have anything else about cursive and everything? I guess it's an elementary question more so. So the latest standards are being to be able to write their first name and their last name. Gosh, how much time.
Really, it's like, maybe it feels like.
I have heard some districts talk about where cursive is bad. I'll try to think about where.
Very bad story.
Extra time in the day in cursive.
And typing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. I'm so sorry that you had to wait until the end of the day. Just about. I know. I didn't realize that that was. Also, I didn't realize that I was on the.
Here's your colleague's response.
All right.
Sorry for the epic novel that I typed at sixty words per minute.
What do you get to use in real world?
Exactly. I actually do suggest that programmers learn how to type if they don't already. And can't really program like that.
Yeah.
So thank you for having me this evening. I'm overwhelmed by the support of some public schools for this robotics team. I think this is my third year as an advisor and I had no idea, honestly, no idea what insane beauty I was walking into. This is the biggest, craziest project I've ever involved in my entire life. Well, it took me all this time to truly understand what the organization's about, what it's like to run a team. So that's why I had to write you all this, let you digest it and see if you had any questions. Superintendent Workhead has been to a competition, so thank you for coming to that. It's really hard to describe, so I did, I can credit AI for helping to craft this opening page because I don't have the energy to describe it on my own, but it's such an amazing opportunity for our students. And thank you to all levels of administrators and staff for helping to coordinate the planning. This is, it feels like a bit of Jenga when it comes to organizing this trip or maybe two trips in the both. So we have a trip to Worcester that we pulled Worcester, we asked for it, but there's a lot of resistance. So we were on the waitlist and we were accepted. And we're very happy. That's the second closest location in Massachusetts. So we've been working out, we've worked out the accommodations and busings and everything. And then Springfield trip is, if we do well, then we will move on to Springfield. And I figured maybe we could put that all together. Do you have any questions for me?
Go get them. Take a motion on the robotics competition.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the in-state field trip to Worcester Polytech for robotics competition. As good as.
Second. All in favor? Aye aye.
But also in Springfield, we want to do it as a possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's like a, it's really after.
Yes.
Do we do another motion?
Yeah. Do another one?
Yeah. I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Springfield April second to April sixth as present.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right, also apologies to Mr. Pendel for having us. Well, she, yeah, kind of had her day. This is, yeah.
So I'm here for approval of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six Sitewith High School Program Studies.
Anybody who had any further questions for us?
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the Sitewith High School Program of Studies as present.
Second. All in favor? Aye aye.
Thank you.
You have minutes from the thirteenth. You are.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and assess.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Aye aye.
One exception.
It's one exception. So for Peter States. Peter States. Bill Lawrence or anything? It's a big deal with that. Correspondences, any other business? Future agenda items? If not, we take a motion to adjourn here.
Motion, motion to adjourn at fifteen.
Second. All in favor? Aye aye.